Do we have a quorum? Yes, we do. All right, and I know Mary's getting here. She had to go home to post stuff and she's on her way back, so. All right, welcome, everybody. Hi Jordy. Glad you could make it. Sorry that I didn't send that to you all ahead of time, but there you are.
It wasn't ready until 1 o'clock this afternoon.
Yeah.
I just saw it.
Yes, it's in your packet right there at the very back. Karen Astley showed me how to fold it, so it'll fit as a nice packet. All the things. All right, a couple more arrivals. Speaking of Karen. Mary, you made it magically. Great, good. And there's a packet on the table. Karen already has her packet.
Planning Commission?
Right, this is nice.
Does everybody have a packet who needs it?
A meeting packet?
Yeah.
I think this is extra, but I don't.
Driving by and you want to say, can you post something?
Yeah.
You guys are already in all our. Yeah.
Okay. Well, there may still be folks coming, so, yeah. Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah. The sign-in is right here.
It's at the end of the page.
Yeah. Yeah. Mike, if you want to move your backpack.
Oh, yeah.
It, I'm sure it enjoys the seat, but. Great.
There's a comfy chair left.
There's still comfy chairs. Yeah, it's an option. Okay. All right. Calling to order, the Planning Commission meeting, Putney Planning Commission. This is our monthly meeting, and this meeting includes a meeting with our zoning bylaw modernization project committee and also consultants. We have some other business to do at the very top of the meeting before we jump into the zoning bylaw material, but we will get to there shortly. I want to welcome the other folks on the phone, or I should say by Zoom, and what I'll do is, I'm Sue Cokely, I chair the Planning Commission, and we use a way of taking notes using Zoom, and it really helps if we just say your name and it might actually attribute the comment to you instead of to me, which makes the notes much more useful. So, Sue Cokely, Chair of the Planning Commission.
Andrew Morrison, Planning Commission.
Vanessa Long, Planning Commission.
Joshua Corson.
Mary Tomford, Planning Commission.
Go ahead, Anne.
Oh, Anne Perry, Conservation Commission.
Mike McConnell in Regional Commission.
Bill Bannister, Planning Commission.
Jordy Heller, Lister.
Tom Hinkley, Conservation Commission.
Gino Palmeri, Conservation Commission.
Karen Astley, Town Manager.
And then we have with us, joining us virtually, Sue Westa. Did I say hello? Oh, we don't hear you yet. All right, that didn't work. Let me just do a test. Those are working. Let's invite, Ry, would you like to say hello and introduce yourself?
Hey, everyone, I'm Ry. I am part of the zoning committee.
Thank you. Sue, maybe your audio's on now? Not yet. So, you have some time to work on it. It's working at our end, so I think it must be an adjustment for you. Anne is joining us from vacation, I mean, Anne, Sue Westa is joining us from vacation. So, we will, I'm just going to review the agenda quickly, and Mary, are you all ready? Making minutes? That's great, okay. We will review for approval a couple of meeting minutes. We have for the last two months, May and June, the other ones are still coming. We'll review our past meeting action items. There's a document in your packet for that. Well, I'll give a brief update about the Joint Putney Housing Collaboration Meeting and next steps. The Comprehensive Village Plan, Vanessa has a brief update for us on that. And then we will get to the zoning bylaw modernization. This evening, we're reviewing Articles 7, 8, 9. The primary focus of this will be the really new material in the entire update to the zoning bylaws, which is the forest block overlay district. And so, that'll be an important part of the conversation, but we have some updates, minor updates to the other sections, Articles 8 and 9, that we'll just touch on. We'll talk about next steps and the project schedule. Yes, help yourself, do you? That's at the very back of your packet, and I will, with that, talk about a proposed meeting with property owners who would be affected by the forest block overlay. It would be a focus group. We had planned focus groups back in November, but we didn't really have material to discuss yet, so this one, we're planning this one, and we'll have a brief discussion about dates and an agenda for that. And wrap up our meeting, and you'll see our next meeting dates, our long list of them there, just so you have them on your calendar. And we'll adjourn by 8:30. Are there any, is there public comment on items not on the agenda?
I'm wondering if you can hear me now.
Yes, wonderful.
Thank you.
Good. Okay. Hearing no public comment on agenda, items not on the agenda, we'll move on to the meeting minutes. Now, the meeting minutes are in.
I didn't, I decided not to give everybody copies of the meeting minutes, just kill a few less trees.
So therefore, they didn't go in the packet, but I do have copies of the meeting minutes for everybody. This will go to the Planning Commission in particular. So, Andrew, if you can help pass those, that started. Since you did that so well, you can do the other one. And so that goes to Mary and over to, over to Penn. There's probably some extra copies, too. Anybody who's curious, these have been posted for a little bit. And.
So, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 6.
Which Planning Commission member would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of May 6?
Make a motion to approve the next minutes.
Who would second that? Looks like Phil. Okay, thank you. Any comments on the minutes from May 6? More time needed to review them? No? All in favor of approving the minutes as presented? Great, thank you. Well, let's try that again for June 3 minutes. And I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 3.
I would make a motion to approve, but I just, one correction.
Well, we'll get that, we'll get to that. Let's get it on the table and then we'll get comments. Thank you.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments?
Yes, just that there's a typo, 0.6.
Okay.
New grants.
Oh, yes.
Otherwise, they look great.
Yeah, it's amazing what AI doesn't pick up. Any other comments on the minutes from June 3? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes with the correction of spelling on Item 6 for grants? All in favor? All right, thank you. Okay. We will post these as approved with the correction. Great. Thank you. So, our next item is the action items from the last meeting. Several meetings. Next thing in your packet. And everybody has that. And you can see that most everything has been completed or is underway for Planning Commission tasks. And the ZBM consultant tasks, that would be Wyndham Regional Commission, have undertaken or completed the work. Things have been added to the project's schedule. And the schedule will be reviewing later on, that's been updated, so you'll see that, and they're continuing to process comments that have been received. Other action items held over from other meetings is working with the town manager to plan next steps for the Putney Landing Pedestrian Walkway and the Comprehensive Village Plan. We're doing that, having those discussions. And in fact, there is something that is in your packet that I wanted to bring to your attention related to all of that. New state designation for community investment. It's a really awful title, but the state legislature and Act 181 modernized, hello, oh, welcome, Adam. Have a seat? We might still have a meeting packet for you somewhere. Let's see, is there one kicking around?
There's a meeting packet that I don't.
Okay. So, the state has a designation program. This Planning Commission has supported a renewal of our designations for Village Center and a neighborhood development area. And that was one of the last renewals they ever did because then the program changed, and now it will be a program adaptive in perpetuity, essentially. But they're also changing the program and introducing new things. I just want to bring this to everybody's attention. It doesn't affect zoning per se, but it certainly affects some of the outcomes of the zoning update in terms of housing and economic development. It will be an important thing for us to get under our belt and understand for the Comprehensive Village Plan, and I think there's a few to-dos for the town to be able to receive all the additional new incentives under some of these designations. So, we're not going to focus on this today, but I really wanted to make sure everybody knew this was here. It's good to read. We will talk about it at the August meeting. And that is one of the things that came up in my meetings with the town manager about the Comprehensive Village Plan, and thank you, Karen, for sharing that with me. And I'm continuing to track what's happening with the Encore project, the 2-megawatt battery project. I don't believe they have yet filed for their certificate of public good. So, no news there. So that's the action item report. Any questions? Comments? Okay. Another way that we all stay informed about things is I shared with you a copy of my monthly report to the Select Board for June. Welcome, Lisa. Great. There's more chairs up here, but if you're comfortable, can you hear there, Lisa? Do you want to come closer? Okay. All right. So, that's just for your information. It does provide a little synopsis that I provided to the Select Board about our last zoning discussion to help them be informed about the changes and what's being discussed. So, you'll see that. And let's see. Let's move on to the, I think that completes the action items. Joint Putney Housing Collaboration Meeting. So, when I presented my report to the Select Board this past month, I did tell them that it was important to have some clarity from the Select Board about what they wanted the Planning Commission to work on next. There are grants to pursue for some of the things, it's at the last page of that report. The action plan that came out of our study, the housing needs assessment and action plan, and these are waiting, and there is funding opportunities. I did say to the Select Board it would be very helpful to really understand what they want to support to move forward, in particular, the housing coordination services to support renewing the expanding existing housing. And so they, they heard that, but they're not ready to provide any clear direction about doing it. So, there'll be some follow-up, and I'm continuing to coordinate directly with the Housing Solutions Task Force. I attend their meetings. I attended their meeting yesterday and try to coordinate the work. They're doing some good work on trying to develop a home improvement revolving loan fund and are working with the town manager and some ideas for that. So, I think the coordination is building and going on, and hopefully we'll have some more clarity about being able to move forward. I would say I'm not, at this point, feeling comfortable going and approaching foundations with funding for the housing coordination services. I have an invitation to that. But, but I don't feel like we're quite there with the Select Board yet, so. I just want to make sure you're all informed. If you listen to the Select Board meeting, you will see that we had that conversation. I think they're trying to get their heads around it. I think that's part of it. Any questions on that? All right, Comprehensive Village Plan. Vanessa, would you like to, do you have a little update about that? Do you want to just, are planning the work that we're doing?
Sure, so right now we're really in a kind of research phase, and part of that was also learning more about Act 181 and learning that the Wyndham Regional Commission has a role in that as well, so kind of figuring out what, how our activities should interact and coordinate. So, we're really starting the next month or so in kind of learning about how other village plans have been done and looking at their models. And then the next step in August is going to be to start recruiting folks for the Advisory Committee. So, any feedback about how to do that recruitment process is certainly welcome. Or any nominations or ideas? People that, you know, have a stake in the village and want to contribute to that plan.
Yep. Well, we'll probably follow a similar process as we did for this committee. We'll have a forum and an announcement and get it out, but we'll, we'll talk about that at the next meeting. But I will say the work that Wyndham Regional Commission is a real boost to the project, because one of the things we were going to do was to look for areas to expand the neighborhood development area in the village. Well, that may be well-covered by Wyndham Regional Commission when they do their updated land use plan. They'll be here this fall talking about that with us, so. We welcome it, and we're glad that we're going to begin the Comprehensive Village Plan more like in February. But we have to get the project advisory committee going soon. Do an RFP, get a consultant, so all that needs to happen before February, so we can hit the ground running at that point.
Just one more thing, just Sue and I have also started a kind of bi-weekly cadence of meetings, so that we can keep it moving forward as well and keep it.
Yeah. So, next meeting, August, we'll spend more time on that. Thank you very much, Vanessa. Any questions? Great, then we can start sooner than planned onto the zoning bylaw modernization topic. And for that, I'm going to turn this over to Mike McConnell and Sue Westa. As we do this, I will just say that I appreciate help to notice that people who are joining us virtually have their hand up. I can see it out of the corner of my eye, not looking at my screen very much. So, if you see somebody's hand up, you can bring that to my attention. It's fine. All right.
Do you have anything that you'd like to say before you get going?
Um, I don't think so, Mike. I think you might as well get right into the meat of it. Maybe we could note, Mike, what the materials are. We've got your presentation.
Here. Red lines for sections, sorry, Article 89.
Well, I'm holding up your presentation, and then I'm holding up your articles. Let me, the articles revised provisions to 7, 8, and 9. As one packet, trying to give everybody a simple thing. There's a map in here? Yep. And then there's also a schedule of next steps, so everybody will see that. And I'll just note that I encouraged everybody to watch this background on Forest Block Overlay Districts presentation that Jens Helga did for last November on Vermont Conservation Design, and it's, it's a little long, but it's a really great overview about why forest blocks are important, the role they play, and how towns are planning them as part of their overall community. And we're now at the step of putting it into our zoning, so hopefully, if anybody was able to watch it, you would find that good background.
Yeah, Jens is great. Wealth of information.
Okay, good. Great.
Hey, Mike, we can't hear you. So great. You're a little quiet.
All right, well, I will. Get that better soon.
Yes, thank you.
So, tonight, Article 7, 8, and 9, we're going to go a bit out of order since Article 7 is going to be, we're anticipating Article 7 is going to enter the most conversation. And it certainly has the most changes and certainly the most new information. The most needed. Just to reflect on memory, these are the changes that were generally implemented. Administrative review oriented, state mandated facilitation changes. They're really going to touch on all four of those tonight. So, Article 8 is, there's very, very few changes in the section. The highlights are really removing the term grandfathering and in favor of legacy. So, did throw out a phrase that, you know, doesn't necessarily have a place in, you know, documents today, so removing that, replacing it. One of the things that we've been hearing throughout the process really was to allow folks flexibility in how they use their property. You know, maybe they're having, they're struggling, maybe there, there's some sort of situation happening with their housing, various extensive repairs. So, in Section 8, there's a clause that says, you know, repairs have to be started within three years of whatever that happened.
Started or completed?
Commenced. So, started, yeah. But, basically, that's flexibility, you know, these things sometimes can be major, like your projects. Just to give them the flexibility to get capital together, obtain financing, whatever that looks like, then this will hopefully help in whatever small it does. And then the adverse effect section, that's really a set of criteria that the DRB will use evaluating additional uses, fault of plans, which is. There were no others, they want some statute of 3D, so no, no thing is really needed there. They're extremely cumbersome, but there are your criteria, so they will, they will remain cumbersome. But hopefully, how, how they're utilized within the review process can be, can be changed a little bit to facilitate that process.
So that's it for Article 8, as you said, pretty light.
That is it for Article 8, so very few changes. Actually, a few changes in the, in section, so not broken, don't, don't. Article 9, definitions, there are a number of changes in this section. Some of them are significant, but at the end of the day, they are definitions, so their impact is certainly felt as with the document, but, you know, in the background a little bit. And a lot of them are meant to clarify different sections within the body of the document. The first one, their residential use, that's one of them. Currently, they're all grouped together. And the multifamily definition includes one unit to five units, which doesn't make sense, because one unit is not a multifamily. So, we separated those out, added a separate definition for, for five, five and above. And then certainly with the ADU definition, you know, to the definition section, which makes sense. Because so far, it was just in, in that regular section.
And as you're doing this, Mike, I know that you're also removing the term multifamily to multi-unit. We're trying to change the language of, of the zoning to be more reflective of just the property, not people that would be in it in particular.
No need for Putney to define what.
Like the accessory dwelling, the apartment might be changed to a structure or a unit. Unless it's, apartments usually associated with attached structure.
Sure. There. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's fluid. You can see at the bottom, or at the bottom right, there's some terms that we have yet to define. So, yeah, any, any comments on or corrections, suggestions on how these definitions could or should be changed is certainly welcome. Yeah. So, campground is the next one, and that has to do with a section we talked about last time where it could be suggested that some people could live in their recreational vehicles for a long time, you know, at a campground. We just added for vacation or recreational purposes for that, for that reason, but of course, I wanted that specific exception. Community facility, there actually was no definition for educational facility, which surprised me, so we just added that. So, community facility, it's pretty broadly allowed, so there shouldn't be issues. There hasn't been any issues today, but that's, you know, it's clarifying, clarifying definitions. Material change, that's a definition that absolutely needed to be added. And actually, in the document, there's a note that says this needs to be added.
Never got it.
So, we did that, and we're deleting that note from the document, so. Yeah. This is the, this is the definition that we came up with, and basically, it's just if, if anything changes within the application with the proposal, that would cause the DRB or the zoning administrator to potentially change their, change how they think about the project, then that is what I think of material changes. We also, and this was in, removed sections, and we got rid of theater and both of them center. Theater is also listed under indoor recreation. Combined that definition, the only word that was missing was galleries, threw it in there, and they have the same use, both other allowed as permitted in, in the same districts, additional in the same district, so that was an easy, easy change. The definition of subdivision flat, in the current document. There are dozens that it is an application for some of these things.
Going through right here.
Part of the application, not the whole application. So, just adding in the definition that calls. The ones that are to be added, and I'm sure we'll get to at least the first one tonight, we discussed it a little bit, is what is fragmentation? Sort of the main theme of what we'll be getting to involuntarily. Define. If you're going to regulate or something, you have to define what it is. That's the first with fragmentation. Those include things that we, those are regulated for. We need to know what they are, so that people who are building whatever they're building also know what it is. It's really need for law coverage on a parcel if you don't know what that is. Also, private road and driveway need to be defined as well, also come up a bit later. This is a suggested definition. This is a suggested definition. And all means included, it's not even in the document right now. But it's just another road other than a town highway. So it's multiple addresses. And that's consistent with D nine on bond requirements, I think, him or her, it's two or three, but it's either it's more than one, but you have to name it. Another two. Thank you.
So two can be a driveway?
Well, this is needed recently.
Yeah.
If you move some of its signs, it say, you can tee it in, it's a, it's three, nine or one addresses.
Yes. We're including driveway and private road within the forest block. regs potentially, so to say what those are. And the, the last one that we're, we're adding is recovery residence. And this is, the definition isn't from statutes, but the sections in the document that we're adding is from state statute. So if there are any to be specific about what that is and what that means, we just don't have regulating for that. I guess we always were, it was in state statute, so it was there, we're just now stating it in the document. Was there any, any questions about anything that we've like thoughts over? We're not excited about definitions.
No, it, this is dotting i's and crossing t's and there's moments when it's, we're really glad that we did it. So thank you for thinking about this and trying to align it with the latest language the state is using. Mike, I know you've been doing a lot of research to try to make sure that what we put in here can stand up when it's needed to. So appreciate that.
They the thing I run into the most is lot coverage and square footage area, one of the area things is making like using it, the calculation, I didn't say outside of the building for, for the square footage. Which definitely helps, but a lot of coverage is like move leaves, decks, you know, but being specific, there's a big, you know, what, what is your intent to manage stormwater is usually what it is, but it's decks can have permeable surfaces, the underages can be permeable. Not much relevant here, but a lot of places when they're calculating the square footage.
Yeah. Adam, are they in? Are they included?
It varies by town. And it's often vague.
Only a little helpful.
I don't see a very vague or very, very specific, you know. I think part of that has to do with whether or not a building permits involved. You know, some can get as specific as, you know, decks above eighteen inches are included, decks below eighteen inches are not.
I think there's a top subterranean wall, so you're like, sure.
I mean, generally, it's anything that's not permeable. So flatwork and roof sheds, things like that.
And it might, it might be worthwhile to make it like simple, like the building footprint plus pay areas, because otherwise you get into like whose measure? And we have our survey, every calculation and, and there's gets detailed and that's gets to me, so young administrator like, oh.
I just approve it.
Hey, that's one thing we're trying to do, maybe things that we can. Roof and flatwork.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get there. If anyone has any suggestions for a lot coverage definition.
Sounds like, Adam, do you have one? Do you have one that you would like to send to, to Mike? A definition for lot coverage you want to send to Mike or no? No, okay. Oh, okay. All right. Well, then work on a good one, Mike. They get them happy.
Modern walls are not put there often. And so over the course of a building, that's like on a, your thousand square feet becomes nine hundred, not nine hundred, but nine fifty square feet of usable space. So and again, how detailed and nitpicky are you going to get? The outside is very simple for
Right.
For the, for everybody to admit, but just to make sure you don't squeeze out.
Listers measure to the outside.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's
And we measure the veneers.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's something that you could do on, say, Google or Thursday. Well, the measurement function there, you can get a ballpark. And if it's close, then, you know, take it.
So if you want to get all the value from your tax dollars, thin walls. Yeah, but then you're getting the maximum inside space for your dollar.
So what was the next thing?
So Article seven areas of special consideration, these are what they currently list, or we currently list in the PNA regs, store lands, areas of rare, hopefully animals.
When a better
Well, let them, let them vary. Forest loss to this, and that's assuming going to be the, the main topic tonight. So we'll go through the, the other parts where it's covered as well. And fully closer, this is not one that I personally edited. I don't know a lot about it. But I did review the changes and these, these little this is the broad strokes. If there's still some questions that I can but what, what we did was updated it, updated the regs for, for best practice, really, there were a couple state law requirements that were added as well, but from what I'm told, those are pretty minimal. And after the reg as it, as it was, was pretty good. Editing
We don't have a red line for
There is not a red
For flood hazard area regulations?
Uh, for any of the existing Article seven stuff? Or am I incorrect about that?
Did I only send the
You only sent the forest block? Yeah.
I can certainly send that along. It's, it's pretty minimal. There's mainly
Yeah.
Nearly took a look at it. There's a couple sections that are included that weren't before, we'll get into those here.
Okay.
So added citations to the documents. Fairly technical, so where, you know, different bits come from is, is important and not, you know, immediately obvious. The redundant sections are sections that were included, you know, they're the noticing requirements, for example, they're, they're in, in other spots, so we don't, we don't in this section as well. So there were quite a few sections like that, cover just kind of cut out in favor of just, let's just use what is already there in that appropriate section. So the significant changes, I mean, feel free to, to chime in as you know about it. I gather there's some folks in here that were involved, anything like that, so feel free to chime in. But we're applying stream set, stream setbacks to additional areas. And that has to do with the size of the watershed. And that's fairly unique from what I gather. Most towns don't do that, but our emergency planner who, who did the, who did the edits was, was very excited that that funding was going to regulate to this level. And requiring the forest buffers, I gather those are around those setbacks.
They're within.
Within.
Like if it's a small stream, it's from the waterway to top of slope or top of bank and then a fifty foot setback.
Sure.
And for river corridors, it's just whatever the bat, river four.
And that's a, that's a, what I might say, the river border maps, yes. But there are a couple, those are
And they also have the small stream maps all updated now, because Pip showed us those and they were pretty extensive.
It's a whiz at the natural resources atlas, so.
As much as a person can be a whiz at the natural resources atlas. I would make comments that change to the stream setbacks that we had been regulating to a particular watershed size, the state identifies to even smaller watershed size. And in reviewing that, it's in most instances in Putney, made just incremental extensions of the length of waterway that was already being impacted by the small stream buffers. And with, I think really only one exception, they were barely minor exceptions, which is what made it feel like this was a very easy thing to go above and beyond on.
Sure.
Yeah.
And, and they're mapped.
And they're mapped. This is another instance right in which A and R mapping exists. It makes it very easy to make a determination.
Yeah. So what, so why not?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Um, are there any other comments, questions on this section?
That's a intensive flood hazard protection, not a stream protection. Like you're, you're coming up with a jurisdiction for flood hazard that's outside the
There are lots, I mean, it's a state designation, some part of the areas are not river corridors and places that are understanding.
The state And it was triggered
Sounds like the town is going to govern them under, under flood hazard.
It's a, it's a component of our river corridor component, and it is sort of an add-on to the structure and the language that the sort of model FEMA base were done. But Alyssa Sabeto at the regional has provided us with this updated version that includes all of the river corridor requirements, which are typically state requirements and state a state expert would be the determiner in that, unlike the Fed stuff, I don't know, you know, by the state level review there is of the flood breaks. But they were incorporated to be consistent with state legal legislation, and so it's all been rolled into one large document. So it has a whole section that does have a different, a different appearance and different format, but it's brought to us.
And that
And, and my understanding was it we, we can check with Alyssa. I thought that it assured that we got our maximum amount of emergency funding to include, to include the river corridor.
Yeah. That enabling legislation, if I remember correctly, when we took that up as a commission, which was not so long ago, it had been triggered by Irene events. So this was in large part, a state response to flooding. That
The river corridors got into the as opposed to the
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that things in Vermont were flooding at sizes and scales that FEMA wasn't set up to resp, yeah, respond to.
Yeah.
So it was a state response to that. And by adopting it, we ensured that when there was
I'd like to check that.
I do recall that as a fairly big part of it, yeah.
The maximizing the emergency relief funds to the community among the checkbox is, is if you enough people are going yet.
Yeah. Well, let me make an action item that we will provide, the redlined version of the flood hazard area regulations to everybody. And there's a little commentary about it and I'll, I'll work with Pip and Mike about how do we provide it? Because it was helpful. There was an exchange with Alyssa to, to help us understand some of these things. So we'll provide a little package, bread lined with a little commentary as a follow-up.
FEMA, like typical town municipal flood hazard settings are like a standalone section
Right.
These different procedures that you go through.
Yeah. And you got all that.
And, and the, and, and the fluvial erosion isn't held to the same standard in terms of the technical response to the, it's really a protection zone where the river is supposed to meander. And the, and I don't know, I'm not saying one way, whether it should be incorporated or not, but the the, that flood hazard, the FEMA flood hazard mapping has its own set of rules. And so adding the, the erosion of river corridor overlay to that from an applicant point of view might be a little like, am I going down all of, all the procedures of the standard flood hazard area regulation, or am I just doing the setback, identifying the buffers and, and staying out of the
I would think as an applicant, you would ask your consultant to take a quick look at it or check in with the zoning minister, because it's a bear of a section. And, and it's so much of it is mandated language about the process. If you, you know, could get an explanation, we've talked about that as a possibility that some of these could get handouts at the zoning administrator's office, you know, he, he's so taking a building, you know, near the stream or, you know, whatever. So it's some initial guidance. But these determinations are somewhat technical, you need to be able to look at the FEMA mapping. Find yourself there, you know, and, and then make a determination, you know, on the bloodway, what's going on with this side of that location. You, you'll get there, but it's not, not good.
Andrew?
I think something worth noting about Putney in particular is that, if I remember correctly, our actual FEMA regulated flood hazard areas are really very contained and are unlikely to be subject to the types of development you're talking about. They're largely in the Connecticut River Corridor. One of them is the Great Meadows, that's the largest one. And, and then some other small and sundry. So for the town of Putney, most of our regs are related to the stream and riparian areas as opposed to, if you look at the FEMA map, it's unlikely to impact your project at all because of where the FEMA mapping in Putney exists. Yeah. That is the one place that it does, yeah, extend onward.
And you had a comment that you wanted to add, or are we ready to move on?
I think they've covered the ground.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Good. Any other comments, questions for Mike about the flood hazard area regulation changes?
I'd just like to say that Alyssa did point out that was somewhat innovative that we're requiring forested buffers in the stream setbacks and between the river cores. Which you, you know, in terms of flooding them, that's one of the best possible.
We had a red line to
And maybe we'll talk about it later, but it also was addressing opportunities for wildlife to get around using that riparian network of connectivity.
Yeah.
So if we acknowledge that that's, those are frequently used travel ways and leave them forested, we've sort of done two things, you know, with one, one, but with that being with the erosion issues associated with the drainage, but also creating, showing enough habitats there because that is a big connection.
Thank you, Pip. All right. Shall we, good, we can move on?
So yeah, one of the biggest, or one of the biggest changes additions to this document, given the forest block overlay district. Everyone coming from the same, you know, bit of information, right, these are, sorry, just things was forests, another natural, these habitats. These sites of blocks, something we're talking about.
Map of the street years.
Forest blocks.
Town plan.
These are some benefits, certainly not the only benefits, but um. Just a couple of the benefits of, you know, what interior forest blocks are providing, you know, species habitat. Diversity in native species and hopefully. Being a deterrent to basives, um, air water quality. Flood, they definitely contribute to flood resilience, right? The more water that can go into the grounds. Rushing down streams, et cetera, um, stormwater ditches and whatnot. Uh, the connectivity blocks are certainly smaller, uh, but they're exactly what they're. Just trying to connect interior forest blocks, also that. This is a map from the town plan. That I'm sure everyone is familiar with, that's why I wanted to use it. Sort of the red and orange boxes and circles to indicate generally where we're talking about. Uh, the main interior fourth block of Putney is. The whole western. There's a unactivity block uh between Honey Mountain and the Bear Hill. And yeah, I got, I got the name from the town plan.
The bear is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Whether it's E A R A or.
So it's the the second largest interior forest lot here in town. And there's connect, connect to the loss and let us have that as well, but the connecting the river, that's area is already. Barely fragmented, um, and then the the South River Road uh block is certainly the smallest. Uh, southeast of uh.
Um, I'd just like to say that the state map forest block. What you're calling the South River Road Forest Block. Technically, uh, doesn't go to the River Road. It goes to ninety-one. See ninety-one on there, do you? That's either green, that's the forest block. And then River Road South, but between there and the Connecticut River, through which River Road South goes. Is currently not marked on map. That's that's part of the forest block.
This black line is River Road.
Yeah, right.
And.
If you want to put.
This thicker line is ninety-one.
I I.
And Sue and I talked a lot about it is the Warden Road Block. So I think we could all come up with, uh, it doesn't have a strong nickname at the moment.
It it, yeah.
And and again, these, this came directly out of the.
This is.
The names inside are directly.
Yeah, I think this is the introduction to a fairly complex topic, which is how do you map this stuff? Um, and we're starting with the highest level look at it, just to get our sense about where is this occurring in town. But the A and R maps have a whole lot more definition. We'll get into that. And that's part of what is in your handouts here, so. Uh, good place to start, though, Mike. This, this is.
Yeah, that's a particular that I hear, but please, please often call on, like, the label itself with a rather, uh, there it'll sound.
Did any other, any other, any comments? So I really wanted to start with why we're doing this in the first place, right? The state mandates that we push. Information regarding forest blocks is a problem. Uh, funny certainly when above and beyond, it's much more detailed than than many town plans uh. In our region and elsewhere in the state, it sure. In that they be actionable um. Actionable bits that you can do. And we're doing one of those, right, right? Adopting and revising the regulations. Uh, but it starts from the objective and that's to, you know, maintaining and improve the forest blocks and then the policies and that down. The diagram, the development, away from these eventually special areas. It's all slopes wrong, it's fine.
And we meant lots. That's intentional.
So the priority forest blocks in the connectors equal to minimize that fragmentation. And then we're, like I said, getting to the action specifically. Um, that's further kind of discussing how that happens is largely up to. So that's why there's, I'm trying to get as many comments as we can. This is pretty new statewide. I don't know that there is best practices established yet, but hopefully you can. After that, that's where the body of our track topic. Um, so this is a pretty important feature in the town plan. It's mentioned in five of the nine. Chapters with, in one of the chapters, you know, really didn't, I can't remember the name, but it's not a. So a topic area chapter, so really a five or eight chapters, those features.
Yeah, it also aligns with the state goals. When you write your town plan, you have state goals, so it's, it's really reflected. In a lot of policy framework.
Definitely something, but putting it all in that's good to see, yeah.
You know how many other towns you stay down on, four blocks and.
Um, I mean, it depends on when, like, when you have to update your town plan. Some town plan that just now need to be updated, so they wouldn't know. Um, but if you have updated it in the last three or four years, you have something.
It was required.
With with the certain. Setting accounts that we would already have.
Well, it's kind of an eight-year process, right? I mean, the town plans are an eight-year process, so. Uh, this was a really new requirement, and so it's been only on the table for about three years, two year, two, three years. So it's only that pers.
It could still be a third of towns.
It could be a third of towns.
Probably a fair number, um, but within the next four or five years, everyone will have something. In their town plan. Now, whether they go to this um level of detail. Probably not, both don't.
Yeah, and not every town has a town plan.
That's also.
One could understand one.
Yeah. We have a very good one.
Kind of all put our heads together and Pip started us off with a fantastic um document that we've been. Kind of working from, and these are the the highlights of. So the result of those, really, it's, it's very simple. That was a, that was a goal from the start, you know, make it so that the zoning administrator can. Effectively and reasonably um evaluate these proposals. You know, two acre development envelope. Uh, the idea of a development envelope is, it's pretty common in these types of regulations. Uh, when, when they're included in zoning. You know, you identify this section on the site, show all the site then on the on the base map. And then what you do in that two acres is is largely up to you, you know, it'll be. Obviously need to correspond with the use profile of the district. Uh, how you orient your larger their cinema homes, but it is up to you. And then the other main criteria, it's no hydro로 to gradually is longer than five hundred feet. Um, and this is also fairly typical. It might not be five hundred feet, but typically they're going to. Limit the length of roads, right? The roads lead to fragmentation, that's what we're trying to avoid. Another, I don't know how common it is, but um. You know, including the concept of an environmental consultant report. It's been acknowledged that the DRB and many DRBs are or planning commissions with those evaluating these. Zoning administrators certainly, you know, they're not experts on this sort of thing, so. Um, let's get an expert to give us a, a report that outlines how, how this does or does not contribute to fragmentation. I haven't seen one. I'm looking for a list of consultants that we can um point to, you know. I haven't found one yet, or really a good criteria for saying, yeah, this is an environmental consultant.
I was gonna ask, right, the state has certain licensed professions, right? Environmental consultant is probably not a licensed profession. How do we define it? Is this. Going to end up in section nine under definitions, environmental consultant? Who, who is an environmental consultant?
I did find the list. I emailed the state about it and it turns out they don't even use that list anymore, so. They rain right on the parade.
Yeah.
But, but same with that, that's where do I figure it out? And if anyone has any comments or ideas or.
Right.
Or types of qualifications um would be appropriate, certainly send them our way. Any, any help is welcome.
But just to clarify, Mike, I mean, the idea is there's sort of two, two different ways you could go about developing the forest block. One is what I call the checkbox approach, meaning there's really set criteria that can be clearly and readily documented. That the applicant can present to the zoning administrator. And if those criteria are met, the app, the permit can be provided by the zoning administrator. If it's something that can't either be clearly documented, so it's, it, what is it? Um, or it doesn't meet the checkboxes essentially. Then it would be something that would go to the Development Review Board and would require that environmental consultant report. So not all projects in a forest block area would require the environmental consultant report. Things that could meet these simple criteria and demonstrate that readily then wouldn't need that. So we're trying to provide flexibility in this and and simplicity, honestly, is three hundred pages of regulations, but. Um, that is the idea across all of this, frankly, in all, in all areas, but certainly for the forest block, trying to find a pathway. That can encourage cluster development essentially um. In existing infrastr- areas of existing infrastructure, roads, utilities, you know, wires. So it's, it's helpful and you, as you go through this, just to know that we're trying to have two pathways essentially.
You know, I just um wanted to say that when we do that checklist, we also have a checklist for the continuing. Underlying zoning and requirements.
Oh, this is an overlay, correct.
Like the weapons and um the rare threatened and endangered species habitat. In other words, there are always something in the underlying zoning that also has, you know, I would think a two acre level is going to be completely clear. And built on, but not have a damaging effect on any of those.
Well, it, it couldn't from a regulatory point of view.
Yeah, you don't want to just say, yeah, this is good. You've got all this criteria checklist.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, among the many regs that we have, that's a reg that needs to be checked.
This is additional. Everything that we're talking about is.
Is an overlay.
It's overlay.
Yeah, I, I know that. I just want to make sure that people are playing things out. And also buffers are required. So what you're putting in has to also have a buffer space. What you, you know, your little envelope and whatever natural area might, might be there. So at some towns, very much within a special conservation district or overlay district. Um, have enhanced buffers. They, they say this is really a special area and we need some enhanced protections for it. And for the animals that live there. Sure, and there's something else. Oh, um, as opposed to this, where you're supposed to place the. The building, the, the, the two acre envelope, it says as close as possible to state highway, other highways. Uh, but at one point, we also said, and other development.
Yes.
Other houses are developed.
That's right.
And that's in the text.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, okay.
This is trying to provide a high level. Yeah, because you have, you have the.
You have.
We do have that.
Text in your.
Happily only four pages.
So what you just mentioned, what we've been talking about before, the small stream, about the wetlands. That is something that could be added to what needs to be shown on the base map.
So in proposed seven hundred point five B as your. Such as locating development in close proximity to existing development in seven hundred point five. Where was it? I just read it. Thank you. Uh, E indicates that utilities, driveways, et cetera, should be shared whenever physically possible. So I think that.
Yeah.
It's in that proposed language.
We do have that within some of those forest blocks out there, there's people who have placed their houses back in the middle of the forest.
Right.
And it, so if you put, this is top of the highway. And put it the same set, other development. Rather than it as a option, oh, I didn't want to give us a highway, I want my house to be in the forest among this other house that's already there. Um, I think that's something to do.
Well. They can't get there unless they can get there in less than five hundred feet. They could share the driveway. Yeah, and that would potentially end up in DRB review. If it produces less impact, then.
Did have to bring in.
Yeah.
Maybe there could be some sort of tiered. Finally. Either click right here, right? Close as possible to highways and other development, maybe highways, town highways. Is higher on the list. Needing that.
Let me read the proposed language, because I think it allays this concern. Development shall be located as close as possible to the state highway, class two or class three town highway. Unless a less disruptive option is available, such as locating development in close proximity to existing development. In the forest block overlay district.
Yeah, that's what it says, if it's less.
Unless it's less disruptive to put it located near. So.
Is the debate that's be, is it less disruptive?
Is less disruptive.
This same room or build a new five hundred.
So, so that's why the environmental consultant report can be very helpful, because it really depends on the situation, right?
Yeah.
You know, you really, we can provide general criteria and then you have to be place-based in, in making that assessment. Now, I'll just note also, like, in thinking about how do we, you know, do shared infrastructure and how do we encourage that? We have otherwise talked about, you know, having cottage cluster development and encouraging that. And that's a place where there's shared infrastructure, say, for up to five smaller units. So shared septic, shared water, shared access to utilities, shared driveway. So there's different ways we're trying to give pathways uh to people to. Develop in ways that minimize impact and hopefully are more affordable, honestly, as well. Um, so you're right, we have to look at what the forest block is saying. And then there's other things that we're making for rural residential, for example, that the forest block would be an overlay over.
I, I think what you're. Plus we don't, if it were close to a, let's say.
Yeah. Yes, and so we're, again, trying to put that more in the checkbox type of permit.
So your comment, if you're gonna do a cluster, small, small houses shared. Is that still within the two acre or is that beyond?
That was for rural residential, and then when you put the forest block overlay, then it would be in the two acre. Because that's that, so there's rural residential and then there's the overlay. So the overlay would say it's another restriction on it.
Right.
But, yeah, to do it in two acres.
Restricted to that two acre.
That's what we're saying here, yeah. For the checkbox permit, not, you know, you get to get the environmental consultant when you're doing a bigger area.
Oh, environmental consultants, I'm sure, and uh. Cheap.
Right.
I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's really the trade-off here. I mean, thank you, Karen, for pointing that out here. I think that's.
I think if somebody's trying to develop this property and, you know, they're restricted to a five foot driveway.
Five hundred foot.
Which is not cheap. You know, they, they like get this consultant, you know. Probably, you know, maybe an engineer, who knows, you know, is it gonna be feasible? Is it gonna be feasible for somebody to develop their property? But.
The, the goal, the, the, the original concept was try to develop a path that is minimal in the regulatory review. And one that doesn't require any determinations from the zoning administrator that are beyond your ability. You know, you're not an environmental consultant, nor is the D U B. So that was the idea saying that, um, I, you know, I don't know whether it is this. The way I was thinking about it may not be the appropriate way presented to the public, but here I'm gonna try it. Is that? Sort of willing to accept the impact of two acres of development. And not getting to the details of it and say that. Okay, you know, two acre, do your, do your thing in your two acres, try to put that two acres as softly as you can to minimize its impact on fragmentation. And one of the ways to control that is to sort of force that two acres to sort of stay on the outside of these big blobs that are the forest blocks. And so the way we imagined doing that was to minimize the length of access. So that if you stayed on the outside of hedging, you did your two acres, the town wasn't going to fuss anymore than that. And that was something that you as a zoning administrator could just check. As soon as it gets more complicated than that, the DRB has no ability to make any determinations. We have no expertise and the zoning administrator doesn't and the applicant may or may not. So we need, we need an outside consultant. Um, if that's the path that the applicant chooses, then, you know, it's unfortunate that that. Suggests that the development cost will be increased, but it was seemed to be the only way to meet the goal of trying to address was. Minimizing the impact of development on fragmentation. When, when it's a technical, you know, area that an environmental consultant really needs to comment on. So I was trying to create two paths. One, simple and direct and inexpensive and affordable.
Right.
The zoning administrator without any D R B involvement. And the other, as soon as you cross the line, then who, who knows what the impact is? You need to get somebody, a professional to guide.
Andrew?
In a rev, in a review that Pip and I did, essentially parcel to parcel. I believe that we felt as if all of the parcels in the existing overlay district had an avenue. For development under the checkbox approach to this. There was not.
Well, there, there are a few.
There may be.
Jordan, I know there.
Two or three, was that the?
Yeah.
Like landlocked parcels, which.
That is good information to have.
Yeah.
And when we go to public engagement, you may, someone may ask the same question I just asked.
Yeah.
That I didn't know, but that's good to know.
So we didn't, we went parcel by parcel and tried to figure this out.
Were mentioned.
Yeah.
Just, um, maybe I missed the definition of two acre development envelope. What's, what's the develop, say you have five acres that are on the edge of the forest.
Is it, is it in the block?
In the forest block?
Yes.
Forest block?
Your five acres are, say, on the edge of the forest block. So you want to develop that, two acres. What's, you're not developing five acres, you're developing two acres if you build a house in a.
The area where development can occur will be within an envelope that is no greater than two acres.
And I guess what's the development mean?
Well, we, you know, it was on the list of things to define.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so we, we don't know precisely, you know, but you can imagine, you know, when you ask Adam what, you know, what's the government is.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Imagine clearing, building a house.
Yeah, your septic system, your road, your.
Your water.
Your bond.
But that's it.
Your fortress, you know.
We sort of borrowed this concept directly from the use value appraisal program. Right, which has always said that if you're enrolled in the program and there is development on the property. You do not receive a preferential taxation on two acres around that dwelling development.
Just.
And development sort of defined within that framework as, you know.
It's, it's just.
Very tight, yeah.
The, the norm definition of, well.
Yeah, so that's where that two acre number came from was something we could wrap our heads around. That had kind of been agreed was sufficient within the context of this one program to have your homestead and.
Yeah.
Live your life.
In, in that use value appraisal criteria formed the basis for the minimum lot size in our conservation zoning district. So the minimum lot size in a conservation zoning district is twenty seven acres. Which allows for twenty five acres, which means the minimum for a current use, you know, two acre homestead extension. You know, so sort of consistent with that, that concept is where some of this talk got generated from.
I guess my own out.
Well, hang on, I think Jordy had a comment.
This conversation leads into really wild here, but full disclosure, I'm looking at it as a lister, but my property is also in the forest block. The, the question I had pursued the other day, does this affect property value? She said, well, no, come to this meeting. And, and listening to this, it's. It, it might be hard to argue that it doesn't affect value.
Yeah.
The bigger, less steep, less wet properties where people really wanna be in the middle. Um, the, the cost of a, a environmental consultant on. The inability to develop, does it affect subdivision, the ability to subdivide?
At the moment, yes.
Subdivisions lots created, we need to meet the.
The underlying zoning or.
I mean, the underlying zoning, yeah, and, but also demonstrate that they were creating two acre developable areas. Right, so that in theory.
Yeah.
A hundred acre parcel. Um, fifty acre parcel, fifty, four lots or five lots and then that. Um, development in there. If it meant that, if it meant those requirements, the dimensional requirements for the road and, yeah. Yeah, so and there's, and there's costs to that, it's, um. It's a discussion I would have to have with my advisors at this, yeah, stuff to see what do we.
Yeah, I'll get, thank you. I will get, I'm gonna turn to Ryan here, let Jordy finish.
Yeah, I just, I got to see the first look at the language just now.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
It's, it's a tough one.
It's a tough one. I mean, it is, so, uh, Ryan, I'm gonna come to you in just a moment here. I, I think what we're um. Dealing with is really this point, if we're going to work with the Vermont Conservation Design and the, and the forest blocks. And their role in maintaining our natural resource base, our climate uh, resilience. You know, are we gonna do the forest blocks or we not? And it's hard because as you have said to me also Jordy, that this is an intergenerational decision, right? You know, this goes on to other generations once we do this. So it's a big deal. It's an intergenerational decision to not protect that stuff and have an eroded landscape, right? So it's, we're trying to find a way that makes sense and it's new. And I think this conversation is really good. Um, we're just beginning it. This is our first step out, so I want to give Ryan a chance. Uh, they've had her hand up. Yes, go ahead.
I do want to mention that in the. The use matrix that we, we're creating for this project, we're, we are broadening the uses in the areas that will be affected potentially by this. Of course, what overlay, but doing it in a way that is. Al- allows the DRB that in, increase review.
Mm hmm.
Um, typically without planned residential development and training for the clustering of, of houses and so. That's also a factor, I would say.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Sorry, bud.
So, Ryan, please.
Sure, thank you. Um. I, I think, you know, I, I, to be, you know, frank, I also live in the Warden Road Forest Block area. Um, and I have exactly twenty six point nine acres. Um, so I did try to get into the um, common use, our current use program. Um, and they were amenable to that, you know, point one being fine. Um, but in the end, it didn't seem like as functional program for me with that, not that much land ultimately. But I think, I think aligning this concept with sort of some of the two acre requirements of the, the current use program. Does kind of make some sense. Um, and I think that, I mean, we're looking at flooding, we're looking at erosion, we're also looking at fire. Um, as more and more fires come to the northeast, if Nova Scotia can be on fire, we sure as heck can also be on fire um, here too. And so we, we wanna be looking at these forest blocks really carefully and, and I think um, aligning ourselves. And I, I think at least in this first step of it, it absolutely makes sense to sort of align it within some of the current use programs. And having that two acre um, buffer or development envelope is useful.
Thank you very much, Ryan, for that comment. Are there other comments? Uh, come to just a minute, Anne, any other comments? I'm just, don't have a full visual. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking in terms of, also looking on Warden Road, that as Pip has pointed out in the past. Um, there's spaghetti lots, there are ten acre lots, um, which is not optimum. They'd be better clustered, but on the other hand, the back part of most people's property, their, their houses are generally closer to the road. And then the back property all, it joins. So in fact, you can walk quite a ways through a forested area, which I have a number of younger residents who love doing that. They are out in the forest, walking through forests, which is created by each owner having their house then. Having forests that really can't be uh, gotten rid of because they can't subdivide the law because of Act two fifty. And I was just.
Already nonconforming.
Yeah, yeah, right, and but, um. Also, uh, if you have property next to conserve land, generally your property value is up.
Mm hmm.
It, it increases and I don't know whether being able to say that this is sort of a cooperative effort to maintain a forest block among at least many owners. And they really do get the advantage of having that large forest through which you can ski. I'm sure there's a number of things you can do there that don't involve clearing buildings. But I was just wondering if that in some ways uh, wouldn't be a plus. For property values.
Yeah, I, I think, as I said to Jordy when I, he asked his question, is this a taking? And I, I honestly don't know. I can, I can see that it could be. But taking from whom? You know, it's really a very good question, the property owner. But again, future generations, you know, do we develop at what expense? So it's, uh, there's a very near term expense. We have a current use program and you'll see a map in a few minutes that talks about how much of the forest block area is already in current use. So therefore, in non-development use is not that it couldn't in the future, but currently that way. We'll, we'll come to that. But, um, so let me, maybe we should just move, you have a couple more slides before we can move to the other maps to talk about them? Oh, one more, okay. I.
Yeah, we really talked about most.
Well, then maybe we should present these maps, actually, maybe this, that would be a good thing. So Andrew, so, uh, those of you online, um, we will show this, I will show it, share it, my screen here in a moment. Uh, but you can download maps from the town website um, under the zoning bylaw project. Where you might have already downloaded some materials for today. We added some maps and you'll see those, uh, you'll see ZBM map. And I'm gonna open them up here and then we'll share them. So that Andrew gets the credit for putting these together. Thank you, Andrew. And he's also going to talk about them and let me get them in the right order here. Do you want to begin with the more general one?
I'd like, yeah, cuz actually the, that map, I think, from my perspective requires.
There we go.
Very little conversation.
Let me, let me then share this back to my Zoom. Share. Map. There we go. There, uh, those of you online, can you see this now?
Yes. And there's just the two, there's just the two, right?
Just the two.
Okay, good, thank you.
And we're starting with the, the simpler one and then the other one is more of a overlay.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, I want to start with a really broad perspective on this map um, and point out. Um. Yeah, some of the big picture things. So first, I'd like to note that. The map in the town plan. Cut off forest block information to the town line. When I very intentionally left these forest blocks as identified at a state level. Um, and so there's four forest blocks here that are identified at the state level. So in the northwest quadrant, there is uh, this forest block which extends northward out of the town of Putney. On being cut off essentially at Putney Mountain Road. And then there's a southwestern forest block that heads down into Dummerston along that same ridge line. So those two blocks together are identified in the town plan as that Putney Mountain Block. And then there's the Bear Hill Block in sort of the central belt of Putney that extends northward out of our. Uh, town up into Westminster and onward. And then whatever we want to call this extension of that um, into East Putney, be it the East Putney Block or the. Uh, South River Road Block or the Bear Hill Extension Block um, that finishes that belt. So those are the four identified blocks and they're not. Unique to Putney, they don't end at Putney's boundaries. They, we have. Stewarding privileges over portions of these much larger areas of forested land. Um, three of those, the two on the western side of town that are identified um, in the town plan is the Putney Mountain Blocks. And the Bear Hill Block, those three are identified by the state of Vermont as um, being ranked highest priority in the state. The South Bear Hill Block or the River Road Block or the Warden Road Block is a priority um, forest block. There are connectivity blocks and other types of forest cover in Putney that are not at all mapped or represented. On, in this display. And maybe feedback for future revisions or versions would be that those, that information was somehow represented. Um, rather than just being blank space, but I wanted to really highlight. Where the overlay district was because, in fact, as written, the green zone is the. Overlay district. So in other words, that we had had discussion about defining the overlay district by the road. Um, road edges and in later iterations, it seemed more clear. If we were allowing for the legacy development within these, that it made the most sense to use the block itself. As the boundary for the overlay district. That brings me to the second point, which is that the boundary of these blocks themselves. Um, provide for a level of confusion that's been brought to us by the agency of natural resources. In trying to sort out data today in a conversation with Jeff Newt, he believes that there may be um, upwards of three versions of. These blocks that are out there in the A and R universe. In fact, two of them are displayed overlaid on each other in this map and that wasn't. Uh, really intentional, I had started with the habitat block information that was utilized within the town plan. Um, and Pip was utilizing habitat block information that had come from Jens. And then he was able to find on the A and R atlas. And it turned out that we were working off of two versions of what A and R had uh, generated. That have some small areas of inconsistency. And I think if I, Sue, I'm gonna steal your.
You may.
I think, can I zoom on this?
Uh.
In a way that's gonna be meaningful?
Yeah, over here, yeah, just.
Oh, that didn't do it.
I just thought over here.
Didn't do it. Yeah, I just have to do this.
Here it is.
Are you telling me? Oh, yeah.
There's your slide bar. And it disappeared.
Oh, yeah. What's my uh, tool here to drag?
My, my, my habit, do it again, my screen is actually.
Yeah.
My screen, no, it's because.
Oh, now we're, now we're zoomed in and lost.
Okay.
Give me one second here. Oh, is that where my pan, I, I wish all these applications like center click should always be to pan and right, anyway, should be to select. This Warden Road, um, is an illustrative example of what's going on here. And so the parcel lines that are in, and I apologize to those of you who are, uh, joining us virtually, you can't see my mouse, I suspect. But the black parcel lines, uh, indicated the edge of the overlay district as based upon the block mapping that is represented in our town plan. Whereas the green shading is, um, the overlay district as based upon the more nuanced available data from Jens. And so you can note that like here, the data that was this sort of statewide data that's in the town plan identified this region of Warden Road as being part of the overlay district. When in fact, this more nuanced mapping, um, does not include it. On the other side of the road, you can see this line back here is the boundary of the overlay district as defined in one set of mapping. Whereas in the more nuanced version, um, the boundary comes all the way to Warden Road with these uh, carve outs for existing development. One of the benefits of the green mapping is that these carve outs are, uh, have a level of nuance. So if we come over to this, um, just to the west of that, you'll notice those carve outs use some sort of circular region around any house site. And then extend that to include any kind of cleared land or altered vegetation. And so you get these very circular oblong kind of shapes that are defining the extent of the overlay district. Whereas in the, um, mapping that's in the town plan, you have these very angular shapes that were like clearly defined as a set of pixels and they do weird things like this kite formation, um, that we see right here. Uh, so I think both sets of mapping data have their pros and cons. And at some point, if we are telling the zoning administrator that this is the extent of the overlay district, as a town, we're going to have to define which A and R map are we referencing? And I would even suggest that because the Agency of Natural Resources seems to not have a lot of, um, what's the right term? You seem to be allowing, yeah, allowing for a versioning of this, that we need to like have a version that is the accepted version, set in stone, kind of lives in a resource the town has for the purposes of administering this. But I wanted to point out those.
Should be periodically updated.
Well, that's another.
And I think that's another, oh, a whole nother question, yeah, and we've talked about the pros and cons of that. So I'm going to go back to the big picture here. If I do this one. Bing, okay. Okay.
Do you want to go to the next map?
Uh, not yet.
Not yet, okay.
So I wanted to point out those inconsistencies and nuances. The other thing to, to recognize is that the key, um, has a couple of down here. The town boundary, that's obvious. It says habitat parentheses, forest block. The state of Vermont, if you were to search out this layer, the state of Vermont is referring to these as habitat blocks. We are calling this a forest block overlay district. And so Sue and I had some conversation, I had originally identified them in the key as habitat blocks. Because if you went to this A and R atlas and you tried to find forest blocks, you would not necessarily come up with these maps. And so we in some ways need to, um, help folks, I understand the little terminology that's been chosen. And, um, how that, the next, um, item in the key here is the impacted parcels. And what I want to point out here is that what's highlighted is the impacted portion of a parcel. Um, and in fact, many of these parcels sort of extend outside of the overlay district. We could go back to Warden Road to have seen that where one of these is you, Anne, right? That the black line creates an imaginary division in that parcel. The parcel itself is only, um, partially impacted by the overlay district. And in a review I did of all of the impacted parcels in the overlay district, um, and I, Sue sent this information out as an email. I think fifty-five, there's, to start out with, there is something like three hundred parcels that are impacted in some manner by the overlay district. Something around the order of fifty-five of those have less than one acre of their total parcel in the overlay district. So, um, you know, if we were to zoom in, you would find parcels that have these like, you know, the back corner of it or some little fragment of it falls into the zone of the overlay district, but you wouldn't consider that parcel to be, um, dramatically impacted. Some portion of them have less than one acre that's, um, impacted. So if we go to the next map, this map was an intent to show what level of encumbrance is already on these parcels. And so, ooh, our people can't see the key. Is there a way to minimize that little?
Probably, yeah.
Oh, we can move it, yeah.
Yeah, I think we can move it. I can. But I just do.
When you go back to share.
Back to share.
There are two more things added to the key, yep.
If you grab the green bar and pull it up.
Uh huh, thank you, I'm trying to. There we go. All right, now we can go back to our, got to get, I get our map back, let's see. Somehow I managed to. Show that.
Maybe down to the blue share, is that what's gonna?
I did something wild.
Well, with apologies to Ry and Sue.
We can see the map very well, actually.
You can see the map, okay.
Oh, yeah, we're all good, we're, yeah, thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right here, my screen.
Yeah.
Yep. There we go, all right.
Thank you.
So now we can see the key down at bottom, but it's kind of too small to read for anybody, anyway. I've lightened the color of the, the forest blocks here simply because with the darker green, it became really hard to see the other highlighted information, but the extent is identical. Uh, the blue hashed parcels are protected. These are either public lands that have a protected status or they are private lands that have a conservation easement. So if we start in the western region of Putney, you, some of you may identify the Conti National Wildlife Refuge Lands, lands held by Putney Mountain Association and, uh, other conservation organizations. In the Bear Hill Block, we have the Forest for Learning Block. That's the large block there behind the elementary school. So there are large parcels of land, in fact, something like six of the ten largest landholders in this block are either nonprofits with a direct mission towards land conservation as part of their mission statement and, and actions, or they are, uh, state or federal organize, land holdings that are protected for the purposes of conservation. Um, so there is, the green hashed regions are property owners that have their lands enrolled in the Use Value Appraisal Program. The Use Value Appraisal Program being some level of encumbrance, but not nearly to the extent of what is described in our overlay district. Um, but these are individuals who have chosen to encumber their land in some manner with regard to development and have it utilized for forest purposes. Yeah.
Can you, um, guess why there might be some errors in that? Because I know.
Yes.
Is in here and it's not part of the hash.
Yeah, this statewide Use Value Appraisal Program layer is time stamped to twenty nineteen or twenty seventeen or something like that. And so there are, um, errors on this. I could point out that I know personally that this parcel here is actively enrolled in the Use Value Appraisal Program as of like twenty twenty-one or something. So yes, that layer that's available from the state, um, is out of date. And I'm not entirely positive on how to get a more up to date version, but the purpose of this map was generally for illustrative purposes. I think that, um, it muddies the waters in terms of understanding the overlay district itself. And so I just wanted to share it to sort of pair with some of those statistics about who are the folks in the overlay district. There is some phenomenal percentage of the properties in the overlay district. The meaty middle is like parcels twenty to sixty acres or something like that. Um, so there's like, there are a lot of individuals within the town of Putney who, um, you know, have all of these parcels that are scattered, um, in and, in and around these larger blocks of land. And so it's, it's quite a large number of, um, Putney inhabitants that are going to be subject to the forest block overlay district.
Yeah.
Questions about the map that I could? I wonder if we can go back to the base map.
Yeah, thank you, this is really, a lot of work. Thank you, Andrew.
It actually, the hardest part of the entire thing was getting the map to download. Um, yeah, the habitat block because it's a statewide data set and it had, it's like very nuanced. It, it was a monstrous file and it wouldn't, the download kept on failing. Um, and the filtering options were very cumbersome to get it down to something that had, had what I wanted. There were some emails with Jeff Nugent and other things and so.
So can I ask a question?
A hundred percent.
Administrator, and if, if the state is not able to update their map on a frequent basis, how are zoning administrators supposed to know of Gino's property being this UVA?
UVA.
Yeah, the, that, that is not part of, the protected lands and the UVA enrollment are not part of the language or the purpose of the overlay district. That was something I thought was helpful in understanding the who component of the landowners of Putney we're speaking to when we talk about.
Will you knock on the security door? Don't you have, I have the most current UVA information. Uh, I may have a map on the, when the ministers have access to this more than, I haven't looked to see when it was updated.
Okay, you mean like a townwide map? Yeah, you certainly statewide map, yeah.
But it's not maybe an A and R's library that you're looking at?
It, it may be updated more. I know the parcel lines are updated.
Surely Sam, Sam Schnesky is walking around with a live version of this map, so it must exist somewhere.
Yeah.
I did not find it to download from state resources, so.
Up to the public, my map is not.
Right, but it is publicly, it is public data, so it, it could be potentially, yeah, yeah.
But it raises, it raises, actually administrative issue, you know, just, that's Karen's question. How do we have good information that might inform, uh, an application and what's being proposed? I just want to do a time check. It is eight sixteen. So we have about another five minutes we can go in this conversation because I'm, I'm committed to being done at eight thirty, as you all know.
Don't want to get hung up on the map, but for me, what makes no sense is that we adopt a map that is current at the moment of adoption. And that we plan to visit it, we, I don't know whether it's been three years or three years or five years. And, um, just review to see if it's current. And if there are major inconsistencies between what an applicant says, well, this is nuts, I just went on, you know, and this isn't right, you know, then, then we got an issue with specific issues we'll have to get resolved. But in general, we don't think we want to use a changing
Right.
map for big employers.
Anne?
No, I just wanted to know, um, I fix some conserve land also, like Putney Mountains, made another acquisition, things like that. Are there maps at the end of the, uh, regulations?
There will be maps, yes.
So maybe those you need to see.
Oh, yes, we're, but we're trying to figure out that right now. Yes, that's a good question. So I just want to ask, Mike, is there something else you wanted to do the last few minutes? We're in a conversation, we can continue it. Or Andrew, is there anything else you wanted to say about the maps that you presented just as we wrap this up?
I think the maps bring up some large questions. There's about which set of blocks we're going to finalize, um, when we think about where the extent of our overlay district is. Because it is going to change how much acreage on particular blocks are impacted. It changes which parcels are impacted, it changes the list of landowners we invite to, um, our, our focus session on this topic, et cetera. So that feels to me like, uh, an issue to be addressed in the near term.
And I, I will suggest that what we do is begin to work on some criteria that would help guide us on where we land on a map. So for example, we've already talked about a couple of them. One is ease of use. It's something you can readily use, it's clear enough that you're, it's not ambiguous, it's unambiguous as much as possible, that would be one. And two is that we actually can get the data, like it's, it's, we, it's, we have good access to the information behind it. So I think there might be other criteria, but you know, ease of use and clarity and that we can have access to the information on an ongoing basis. There may be other ones that come up and I think maybe Karen, as a zoning administrator and Pip is the head of the DRB, what would be the kind of criteria you'd be looking for that would help us land on what map we choose? So that's, that's how I would suggest we, we're not going to answer it tonight, but I think that pathway will help us get there. Uh, Anne?
Off the, from what point do we count the driveway?
So, oh, come.
From what point is the length of the driveway measured?
Yeah.
That's, that's.
That's in there, yep. It's in the drive.
That's in the draft frags.
Yeah. Adam?
I'd be surprised to hear you say that. The draft, I was here, I, I really appreciate the checkbox, and then the, and then the DRB, the US has most overlays and jump. And I do appreciate the, the intent and the consistency of the town plan, I think the forest block is a habitat block.
Whatever they're called.
So this is for town level zoning, but in state level zoning, they often allow you a waiver if you commit, if you offset some other right, contribute to that housing posse, or conserve land, put a conservation easement on it. So there, you might think about having a, a waiver which you could make six hundred foot rough, conserves and that's about, of that nature.
So potential trade off options is what you're, yeah. Yeah. I just, I think you're just helping us think about it broadly, like what provides flexibility? Because that's one of our goals here is to achieve the outcome of protecting the natural resources and the, you know, the not fragment the forest block. On the other hand, we need to make it workable for people, so are there options? Yeah, but what are they?
But the, it's likely, it's, it's one of the keys, so.
Yes.
Sort of some land that builds a connection between the east and the west that would seem to merit. Some land that builds a connection between the east and the west that would seem to merit.
Yes. It's a little bit like that forest block in the middle, that Bear Hill that connects the two that you were just talking about, Anne.
In in the same vein, um the reason Bear Hill is the highest priority forest block is because it's connected to Hickory Ridge. By looking at the map, you can see all the houses coming down from Westminster and the houses going up to the buried tail and and the private road that extends up to East Stumpfong Road. And if you're an animal, you're going to start being, the connection is going to be broken. And there may be that type of situation where uh somebody could put a conservation easement on it.
All right, we're going to have to shift our conversation if we're going to wrap up um in the timeframe that we talked about. A couple of things that I want to do, um I'd like you all to plot this very colorful chart. Adam, maybe you'll look on this someone if you don't have it. This is our our schedule, um which is it um it's been fine tuned a bit, but we're landing on some dates, which is really important. I've circled some of them in red. So those of you, let me see if I can, it was up to be on the screen. A second. Where is the? And then I will share that. We're going to stop share and share the next thing, share. Schedule, okay. Can you all see that? Online?
Yes.
Great, okay. So where are we? We're right here. Our meeting in July. This is our last meeting of section by section review of the bylaws and subdivision regulations. I just want to congratulate everybody. That's three hundred pages worth of material we covered in three, three meetings. There's a lot of backwork that that went into that. There's still more talk and learning and thinking to do. We're not done. This was really a first round and it's helping us write this. It's helping Windham Regional understand what to write and how to write. We're all getting smarter about it. So the next thing that will happen uh is in mid-July is, this is a new thing in the schedule, is a proposed focus group uh for the Forest Block Overlay District affected property owners. We think this is such a big change that we really do need to reach out to the folks who would be affected. Um and in a minute, uh I will share with you a draft agenda. In fact, maybe, Andrew, you could help me get that around. But um that that meeting will um be a chance to just, this was so much fun here, trying to explain the forest block to you all. Um and it we we need to bring it to other groups and have this conversation as he hear from them, their questions, how it impacts them, their suggestions, what they like about it, what they don't like about it. So we, uh I would, uh Landmark College has offered to use their space that we used for our first community meeting. This is, this is really a focus group is what it is, not a community meeting, but we'll invite those folks affected. It would be on the twenty-ninth or thirtieth of July. Yeah, it's a Tuesday or Wednesday. And I just want to get a quick note from Planning Commission members. Uh, is there a date that's better? I'm going to go for the thirtieth unless anybody suggests otherwise. That's the Wednesday. That's what I was thinking, but Wednesday, the thirtieth, going once, twice, okay. I'll come back to the agenda in a minute, but what that, what's also happening this month is in uh on the twenty-second of July, Windham Regional, like in Sue Westa or Mike McConnell and Sue Westa are going to give us the first round of the of the integrated set of bylaws and subdivision regulations. And then we have a homework assignment, and that's to review it so that by August fifteenth, we can provide comment back to Windham Regional. Uh so they understand what are the issues and changes to be considered. And what we're doing is working towards our September second meeting, which is the next time this group meets, actually as a as a regular meeting. And at that point, we will look at what changes to the July draft should be made before we put it out for the community meetings that will be coming up in September and October. Um and those community meetings will be September thirtieth, a Tuesday, and October fourteenth, another Tuesday. We'll put everything out by September eleventh for the community meetings, um including uh Mike's wonderful snapshots about what what's different, what we're, what's being proposed. And and to focus the conversation, but they'll have the whole redlined version so they can see it. And we'll present, we'll present the bylaws and the and the subdivision regulations in those two meetings. We won't try to do it all in one meeting. Uh, we'll, we'll take them in two, two bites. Um and we'll be soliciting feedback. You have in your, on the other side of the the chart, you'll see this process of how people can provide comments. They they go to Windham Regional, they go, they go to uh Mike McConnell and Sue Westa, um copied to me. Um and um they are responding to them, but they're also tracking them and using that to inform where the regulations are going. So you can continue to provide comments there and you'll get some direction um when we send out the draft on the twenty-second about how to provide comments. Um and then by the November fourth meeting, um this group will talk about what we've learned from those community meetings, what is needed to do a final draft of the regulations and subdivision, uh the bylaws and subdivision regulation regulations. At the December meeting, the Planning Commission will be reviewing, will be reviewing for adoption for public hearing the bylaws and subdivision regs. We need a thirty-day notice, so if we adopt that the first week of December, our first meeting in January can be our public hearing um on on that. And at the public hearing, you know, we will take comment. We could decide to adopt the regulations at that hearing, or we could meet again after the hearing to adopt them and recommend them to the select board. But that's the pathway we're on. And um these meetings like this will be more preparing for that discussion with the public and and preparing for hearing. So uh any questions about that schedule? This, it hasn't, this this has been the trajectory. We're just landing on dates and we're we're really sure about these dates now and reserving space. I'm hoping to do the community meetings maybe in the Big Barn for Yellow Yellow Barn. I've asked them. We can do that, so we'll give that a try. All right, um there's an agenda here that I've proposed. This has been in discussion with others for the meeting that would be now on the thirtieth of July. And I welcome comments and suggestions about it, but basically it will be an introduction uh to what this, what the zoning bylaw project is, what we're doing, the modernization project, and the introduction of the Forest Block Overlay. Some have suggested that it would be good to talk about why forest blocks matter to Putney, just begin with a background or of like, why is this important? Why are we doing this? And then present it, uh and then I have some Q and A and break into small group discussions to talk about it. More questions people have, how does it affect the property owners? What do they like about it? What concerns do they have? What would make it work better for them? Uh that kind of thing. Yeah, report back, what did we learn from those conversations? And then close with next steps and how people can stay informed and participate in the process going forward. Uh and that would be a two-hour process. Um and if we did, that would be the kind of agenda and the idea would be this week, if we can work from that dress space that you gave gave to me, uh Andrew, get an invitation letter out um to let people know what's happening. Uh Landmark is happy to host it. That's really a great location. It's accessible, parking, all of that. Yes, and it's, yes, and they are a major property owner um affected by this. So, and we post it around because we would have to, um open meeting law would require us to to note it, um if the commissioners are going to be there. Um and after the meeting, we would summarize the group feedback. We'd ask um Windham Regional to do that as a focus group and then uh use that to inform any revisions uh that we'll be talking about at the September second meeting. So comments, thoughts about doing this focus group? And I know uh Sue and Mike have been doing a lot of thinking about focus groups, particularly Sue. But suggestions before we get this going? I think I would ask if, and this this idea about inviting Jens is an idea. We have, we haven't approached him yet, but um I would expect him to talk about that, you know, just understanding forest blocks and connectors and how it all relates. I mean, it's not just one, it's not just the forest, right? It's the wildlife in it. It's. That's what I'm proposing is that we would invite him to this next meeting. I don't know. A remote, you know, just have him zoom in and give us a presentation. I I don't know if he's available, but we're going to reach out. And if not, Jens, maybe another person. Um nobody can do what Jens does, but. So, uh, okay, so I'm, if anybody's other ideas about this, let me know, but that's largely what we're going to run with. And I will send you all meeting notice for the thirtieth. Um this will be everybody on the Planning Commission Advisory Committee. And everybody here, who's, anybody who's listening to this is welcome to be in that conversation. We will focus on people affected personally as a property owner by the forest block. It's a focus group, but we're, they're never closed discussions, right? Okay, uh so that was the schedule and um that's basically it. Um this this group meets together at the focus, oh, in the focus group, and I'll send you all notes about this. We would ask the Planning Commission and the Project Advisory committee members who can attend to help facilitate the small groups, and I provide some guidance for that. That would be the idea. And we'll try to get an idea of how many people are coming. I'm going to guess forty people at max. We could take sixty if that many showed up, but it might be, it's it's July, right? It, we may not get a huge group, but we'll be, we'll do our best. Okay, I don't have my agenda because I gave it away.
Anybody out there particularly skilled with Excel and Microsoft Word? Within G I S, I can export the state parcel data for the landowners underneath the overlay district. To get that from an exported table to a mail merge that is actually going to like have the correct address, have the correct recipients and be clean enough to operate as a mail merge. From my perspective, seems like if I did it, it would be incredibly tedious. I feel like I'd have to tweak every record.
Barry can help. That's great.
I'm done, or I'll do it again.
Wonderful. Okay, we're going to talk to you this week. Okay. Fantastic, okay. Any other, any feedback or anything else from this meeting? It's a whole team. It's the Planning Commission. I want to thank Josh for joining us. This is the first time you've been to a meeting here, so thank you for dropping in and be happy to get your feedback about the meeting and all of that. Okay. With that, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, all right, thank you. Anybody who can stay to help fold chairs and tables and put them back? I would love that. Oh, yes. Make sure we have everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you. Goodbye, Rai, Sue.
Bye, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.